Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Warden.
Mr. Hutton, would you please do some purpose?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Mr. Warden, point of purpose, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. -- oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Point of privilege and our rules of order. Sorry, point of privilege and our rules of order. We have continued discrimination and violation of rent on the policy A O four, which includes all employees and all councillors, material human rights code, media charter of rights and freedoms, Supreme Court decision case thirty-five four ninety-six, which are all in favor of not saying the warning, however, we request that we not say that purpose.
Thank you. Considering that argument, I'm going to rule against that request. I'll cite section two twenty-four of the municipal act, which is the role of council, D, to ensure that administrative practices, policies, procedures and controlership policies, practices and procedures are placed to implement the decisions of council. I'll also cite two twenty-five subsection C one of the municipal act, the role of head of council, which says, "Without the number clause C to provide information and recommendation to the council with respect to the role of council," describing clauses two twenty-four D and D dot one. And my rationale is that we have a procedural bylaw. It hasn't been repealed or changed by council, and as such, this continues to be part of the procedural bylaw.
I would ask again, Warden, I would like to challenge your ruling because what you're doing is in fact unlawful.
I appreciate you challenging it. At this time, though, I'm not considering changing my ruling. I don't see it as being unlawful, and I would suggest we'll go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Warden, can you do my challenge and review?
I can do one of two things. One is I can, under a procedural bylaw, I could ask you to leave the chamber under the total of conduct. Or the other is that I can ask you to, in essence, I can ask you to leave the chamber. And with that, you can challenge that by a motion to council. It has to be seconded, challenging right of suit.
I would challenge the motion.
Okay. And is there a seconding, challenging right of suit? So having waited a simple amount of time, I would suggest you wouldn't challenge her. So with that, you can either apologize, or you can remain.
I don't know why I shouldn't apologize, why I don't have a second. Mr. Warden, I prefer to stay here.
Okay. Thank you.
Here with counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Hutton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, members of county council. Almighty God, we give thanks for the great blessings which attend this toll on Canada's citizens, including this freedom and opportunity and peace of the Lord, guidance in our deliberations as county councillors, and strength us in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities, grants of wisdom, knowledge and understanding, to deserve blessings of country, for the better of all, and to make good laws and wise decisions. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Counselor Doncaster, present. Counselor Don, here. Warden Eamonn.
President.
Counselor Farr.
President.
Counselor Gibson.
Sir, here.
Counselor Gruntz.
Here.
Counselor Kingberry.
President.
Counselor Love.
President.
Counselor McKay.
President.
Counselor Miller.
President.
Counselor Murphy. Counselor Pecker.
President.
Counselor Reimold.
President.
Counselor Robinson.
President.
Counselor Stack.
President.
Counselor Sweet.
President.
Counselor Vindal.
Here.
Moore.
Moore.
Thank you.
Moore is here, too. Thank you. Members of county council, during the month of April, I attended fourteen meetings on county business. On April nine, I attended the grand opening of the regional nephrology center at the Renfrew Victoria Hospital. On April thirteen, I continued the taping of up-to-date segments with Coligipo. This month's topic included the Hi-Ac World Championships in Beachburg, which is located in the Towneville White Water Region, and the event will be held August thirtieth until September fifth. The Active Transportation Summit scheduled for May twenty-ninth in Catalina, and the Silver Chain Challenge, and the Development College Auctions Skilled Trades Fair with other topics. On April fifteen-nine, the manager of economic development, Alistair Barry, made a presentation to the Towneville Crudenell and Donovan Regent regarding making nuclear laboratories a local initiative. On April sixteen, I attended along with CEO Jim Hutton and Mira Machine Lodge administrator Shelley Sheedy, the annual volunteer dinner at Mira Machine Lodge to thank and recognize their many volunteers for the great service that they provide. On April twenty-one, I attended the grand opening of Cafe M, a new onsite coffee shop at Mira Machine Lodge. The opening of Cafe M was made possible through the fundraising of the Mira Machine Lodge Foundation. On April twenty-third, I was interviewed by Maya Tham regarding the provincial budget. On April twenty-four, I attended along with CEO Jim Hutton, a meeting of Eastern Ontario Boardance Caucus. The caucus is dealing with a number of important issues, including natural gas distribution in rural Ontario, the cell phone gap analysis, and the EORN, Eastern Ontario Regional Network Digital Strategy. On April twenty-eight, I attended and brought greetings to the Ottawa Valley Tourism Association Annual General Meeting, held at the Rankin Recreation and Community Centre. Tourism is an incredibly important industry in the Ottawa Valley, and it would not be the same without the dedication of the O B T A and its members. This concludes my address for this session of county council. With that, should I go back to item number five, and disclosure of junior interest, please? Seeing none, thank you. And then, item six, which would be the adoption of minutes on April, or March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, which are on the website, Counselor Vesneski-Bur, Counselor Love, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Thank you. Sorry, I have a busy reading and a couple of things at the same time. On the board's address, Mr. Paul Morrow was going to be here. So instead, we'll let Mr. Hutton introduce our delegation, please. Oh, there's Mr. Morrow. Steve Bullen was talking to him, and they were doing their hockey tool for play.
Thank you, Warden. My apologies, and I'm winning, actually. It's my pleasure to introduce Todd White. Todd is with us, and he said, "Go ahead, Todd effects, okay." Todd is with the Canadian Radio Information Notification Service. It's a non-for-profit organization made up of approximately two hundred municipalities from across Canada. The purpose of the group is to receive and process and evaluate proposals for radio communications towers, otherwise known as cell towers, on behalf of partner municipalities. So this organization is your advocate as a municipality, and they, again, are a non-for-profit. Essentially, Charles Cheeseman, our manager of planning, and a number of other staff were at a session held in the city of Pembroke, and Todd had presented at that meeting to talk to that municipality about why they should sign on with CRINS and why it was a benefit to them. Charles came back and had had a conversation with our C A O, Jim Hutton, and said, "You know, this is something that I think all our municipalities should be aware of." And after Jim had talked with the warden, I always agreed that we would have Todd come today to speak and provide the information about their program. I think it's a good fit with the expansion, or possible expansion, of cell service in Renfrew County, with the work that the Ishaun Ontario World Network is doing. We may see more cell towers in Renfrew County, so they will want to put up these cell towers, and that process will probably be important to you at the local level. So Todd, I'll let you take it away and explain your organization and your process. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good morning, Mr. Warden, and through you to council. I just want to confirm, I have my time allotment, because I can sometimes talk a little bit long. So what is my time allotment? Ten or twenty minutes? Twenty minutes? Okay, perfect. So, as Paul had mentioned, approximately three weeks ago, I presented to the planning staff of the various municipalities. I'd like to acknowledge that both the city of Pembroke and the town of Laurentian Valley, municipality Laurentian Valley, are currently members of CRINS. And so my purpose here today is to extend the invitation to all the other municipal units to participate. So first, let's figure out what we're talking about here. And what we're talking about are antenna systems. Quite often, we talk about cell towers, but that, it also extends to amateur radio operators, public safety towers, broadband towers, et cetera. And certainly here in Eastern Ontario, the EORN is certainly a growing concern. We're talking also about tower structures and antenna systems that are put on top of buildings, so quite often antennas are put on rooftops. And we're also going to be talking about Industry Canada's, what's called Client Procedure Circular Two Zero Zero Three, issue five, which is the procedures that all-spectrum license holders and anyone who wishes to build a radio communications tower must follow. So first, allow me to introduce a little bit about CRINS. CRINS is a not-for-profit. It's owned by the municipal members, and so we have two hundred municipalities going from coast to coast currently, and they, we deal with the applications in all those member jurisdictions. Membership in CRINS is limited to municipalities and provincial government agencies who oversee land use. So Industry Canada is not involved in CRINS directly, nor is Industry. So we are an independent third party, and we do represent our municipal members. We were launched in January twenty-twelve, so that's three years ago. We now have over two hundred municipalities that we deal with, but we, I would say that that number is probably going to go quite, go up quite substantially in the next few months. Part of what we are doing is we are going on a county-by-county basis throughout Ontario, and then proceeding further west to get as many municipalities working with us as possible, and I'll explain why that is of some value. What we do as an organization is we serve as an extension to your existing planning staff. Radio communications towers are kind of a unique beast. They are a federal undertaking, so it's technically done under the Radio Communications Act, but it impacts a whole bunch of provincial and municipal areas of concern. So what we do is we actually work with planners to make sure that proposed applications for towers meet the federal regulations, they meet the provincial regulations, so whether it's environmental, whether it's species at risk, all of those things. We make sure that those things are actually reviewed, as well as the land use requirements of the municipalities. And so we have engineers on staff, we have lawyers on staff, we have real estate people on staff, all of the necessary skill sets combined with the local planning expertise to evaluate these proposals. We do a lot of education of the public, and interestingly, when we started in twenty-twelve up to twenty-fourteen, we had been involved in about two hundred and forty-five tower applications, and we answered over twenty-four thousand public inquiries. What was interesting about that was a lot of the public inquiries were not even from our own member jurisdictions. People from the public were calling us because they found us easier to get a hold of than Industry Canada and Health Canada. So it sort of says something kind of interesting about how it works. In our member jurisdictions, to take you through, so in a member jurisdiction, when an application is received, we work with the planners, we review the application, assuming the application is acceptable, we then go forward into a public consultation. And public consultation has been a real sticking point with a lot of these applications, because if a municipality does not have its own protocol in place, the proponents follow what's called the Industry Canada Default Protocol. And that Industry Canada Default Protocol is very minimalistic. Most planners would say it's nothing close to what you would consider as a public consultation. It's a very small notification to adjacent landowners. There's not necessarily public meetings, there's not necessarily, you know, notices in the newspaper, depending on what type of structure it is. There's a whole series of sites, for example, rooftop sites are exempt from consultation altogether. So a lot of municipalities found that very frustrating, because members of the public were contacting councillors, contacting staff, and saying, "How can this be? I went away from, for the summer, I came back to my cottage, there's a tower in my view, how did this happen? Nobody notified me." And so that caused a lot of consternation. And so part of what CRINS does is we actually manage the public consultation process. And although, because my time limit is unlimited here today, our consultation packages are very extensive. They're twenty-five page, full color, they're sent out by courier. We really go to the end of the rope to try to make sure that people receive notification. After we've done the public consultation, we take any relevant concerns along with planner inputs and our own input, and we present the results to the proponents in Industry Canada. And basically, so far, out of all the applications we've done, we've done about four hundred now, we've only actually said no to about twenty of them. And I make that point because some people feel that, "Oh, well, CRINS's role is to stop towers." It's not. We don't view our role as stopping towers. Our role is to help put the towers in the right places. Most people want the service, it's useful, we all use it, but there's a right way and a wrong way to do some of these things, and our goal is to make sure that the towers are put in the right places and the right things are done around it. In many cases, there are conditions attached to some of our approvals, and we do provide ongoing review of any obligations. So for example, if there's vegetation issues, like planting of trees, or treatments of the buildings, et cetera, we deal with those. So I'm just going to back up a little bit and talk about the regulatory framework, because it may not be clear. Under the Radio Communications Act, the Minister of Industry has the ultimate authority to approve or not approve a tower. Now, that doesn't mean that the Minister of Industry sits there and approves every tower. Basically, it's a management-by-exception process. So basically, the rules are in place that if the minister has to overrule something, he has that ability, but the CPC document says that they are looking for input from the local municipality to make the decision and say yes or no to a tower. And if it becomes an arbitration issue, for example, if a municipality does not want a tower and the proponent does, then it will go to Industry Canada to have a final, you know, a final adjudication. But in general, the Minister of Industry is not in the business of overruling municipalities. They do take what municipalities say seriously, and that's one of the things that has, perhaps, we've tried to communicate quite extensively. There was a point where municipalities used to say, "Well, we don't have a say, nobody's listening to us." And in fact, that's not true. Industry Canada does listen to what municipalities say. They do reserve that right to make a final determination, but your input is valued. And so, again, this is just the Radio Communications Act, and I've highlighted the section where the minister can make the final decision. So now, I'd like to just show you this slide and talk a little bit about, again, this cross-jurisdictional aspect. As you'll note, when it comes to the actual radio on a tower, that is where Industry Canada gets involved. And I'll give you an example. If you were to build a radio communications tower today, but not put the radio on top, every aspect of that development would actually be under provincial and municipal control. It's only when they put the radio on the top of that tower that all of a sudden you lose ultimate authority and it goes to the Industry Canada. And it's kind of, and it's because of that, the public get confused, because they don't understand, well, every other aspect of this is actually would have been under provincial or municipal control, but now you put, you know, a small radio about the size of a pizza box on the top of it, and all of a sudden, it becomes federal. And we've used this slide to sort of, when we've talked to Industry Canada and when we're going through some applications, because there is a number of areas that have to be respected, and one, and a lot of them are under provincial and municipal control. There's the land use, but there's also things such as occupational health and safety, there's also the practice of professional engineering, and there's also First Nation land claims. And I'll point out just two small points. On the issue of professional engineering, we've had some challenges, and we've had to argue it out with Industry Canada to some extent. Their Industry Canada does not require professional engineers to be licensed in the correct province when they're providing their documentation. So for example, an Ontario engineer could be providing attestations for Safety Code Six or stamp drawings if for New Brunswick, or for Quebec. Well, you couldn't do that at a provincial level, but the federal government does not require that engineers be licensed in the province they're practicing. We've actually had to go back and push back on that, because without them being properly licensed, their liability insurance does not apply. So that causes an issue for municipalities, is who's responsible if something goes wrong? If the liability insurance isn't valid because they're not licensed, we have a problem. So this is one of the things that we've ended up dealing with, with Industry Canada. I thought I'd give you some interesting facts about the county of Renfrew. Whenever we go into a new jurisdiction, our members, we do what, we do an audit of the facilities that it currently exist. And you might be surprised to know that there are actually over eighteen hundred active antennas in Renfrew County on over two hundred and twenty structures. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, that there was that many towers in Renfrew, but there actually are. In nineteen ninety-five, however, there was only twenty-eight structures, and in two thousand and five seventy-three. And what that speaks to is the fact that because cell phones and smartphones have become so ubiquitous, and we're using so much wireless technology, the number of these applications have grown quite considerably. If you were to go back in nineteen ninety-five, the majority of the towers that were here belonged to C N, belonged to the Public Safety. They were mostly government-driven, and there was a handful of cell towers, because at that particular time, analog cell phones could have a tower that were fifty kilometers apart, and it was not a problem. But now, as you can see, we've increased, pretty much tripled each, over each ten years. And there's no sign of that abating in many respects, because even in, as you get into more urban areas, the need for more data capacity happens, and so there are more towers that are called infill sites. So they're putting up more and more antennas to allow for more data, and so there's more of these structures happening. Some of the challenges that proponents face are the fact that the towers are driven by an engineering problem. Sometimes people will come up and say, "Well, why are you putting the tower here?" And the proponents' response is usually, "Well, because that's where the radio waves will bounce the way we want them to bounce." And so that, it's a law of physics issue, not a law of policy issue. Now, that having been said, there's usually more than one of them. Anybody that says, "Nope, it has to be in this site," we generally don't believe that, at least not firsthand. There are some instances where it turns out to be that, but generally, with a little bit of clever engineering, you can find some alternate sites. So there's a compromise that has to happen here. And the problem has been that a lot of municipalities, to be fair to the planners, planners have land use planning expertise, but they don't have electrical engineering expertise. So one of the things that we bring to the table as an organization is when someone says, "It has to be here," we can actually do the analysis as well, look at what the proponents are suggesting, and help find alternatives. And in fact, we've done some of that in a number of different jurisdictions here. Again, smartphones have driven data usage, so you're starting to see more smaller sites showing up, and that is to support simply, you know, texting, all the teenagers texting back and forth, and people receiving emails and what have you. One of the things that all of these new towers do, however, is it causes, it has an impact on the visual landscape. So a lot of people, when they see a tower, it's not necessarily the most attractive thing. And part of what CRINS does is we have something called the Antenna Siting Design Framework, and it's a scoring system that we use to determine the impact of a tower on the local area. And so the amount of consultation that we do with the local municipality and with the people in that municipality changes. It's dynamic based on how contentious the site is going to be. So for an example, if someone was to build a twenty-meter pole in an industrial zone, that's going to have a far less of an impact, because it's in an industrial zone, than if somebody tries to put a seventy-meter tower in a residential neighborhood. And so obviously, the level of consultation that we're going to go through for a seventy-meter tower in a residential neighborhood is going to be a much higher bar to meet than it is for an industrial zone. And what has resulted from this, when we started this, it was based on a system that was done in the United Kingdom. It's called the traffic light model, and they have a similar system. So it's not unique to CRINS, but what we did is we took it and we adopted it. And now what we find is when proponents come forward with applications, we're scoring those sites, and it becomes a carrot-and-stick approach, because if it scores well, they have a shorter consultation process. If it scores poorly, they have a very extensive consultation process. And so they are actually picking their sites to be more adaptive, to get the lower score, so it actually works out, so for them, as a way of an incentive. And again, what we achieve with this scoring system is something called a degree of visual change, and that's how we determine whether we have to go through a low, medium, or high level of consultation based on sites. So I'm sort of, again, it's very hard to get through all of this material, but basically, what our service goals are is we try to work with all the proponents and the public and the land use authorities or the municipalities to find the right place for towers. Again, we're not here to stop towers, we're here to just make sure they're put in the right places. We do educate the public on the exciting issues, and the benefit of that from a CRINS perspective is we're offloading your planning staff, we're helping offload councillors quite a bit, because what happens is when the public have questions, they come to us directly. We have a one-eight-hundred call center number, we provide, they can contact us by email, et cetera. So we deal with a lot of the public-facing inquiries to give them information. We do provide very good transparent disclosure. All of the information on proposals is presented online. One of the things with public notification is you used to have ads in newspapers. Well, that was great, but not everybody reads the newspaper, so we do use social media like Twitter and Facebook, and it's on our website. So we try to make sure to use as many communication channels as possible to get the information out. And again, a lot of what we do is also audit trail and statistical modeling, and where that comes in is, in fact, we actually produce a report card for the industry. So every proponent, whether it's Rogers Bell, Telus, whether it's individual consultants, every application that comes in is graded through the A S D F. We also look at how willing they are to work with CRINS and the municipalities, and we score that. That report card is provided now to Industry Canada on a quarterly basis. They have now started to ask for that. So we actually are grading the entire industry, and what that does is it's now provide, put a little pressure. We've started to see proponents wanting to look good to Industry Canada and look good to the regulator, and so that's part of the mechanism that we do. A lot of what, all of our information is through our website, so it's very easy to get access to, and that's that. So I'm coming back to the original invitation. The invitation, as I've indicated, Pembroke is already a member, Laurentian Valley is already a member, and I'm extending the invitation to the rest of you to join. What we are trying to do is we are trying to go county by county and get a consistent process through all of the municipalities, and I'll use an example of why this is important. City of Guelph is one of our members, and when they became a member, the number of applications dropped off quite a bit, because the protocol that we use is quite extensive. And what we were finding is next door is the municipality of Guelph-Arimosa. All of a sudden, Guelph-Arimosa, who had never seen applications for ages, all of a sudden got six in six months. And the reason was, is the proponents were moving the towers across the municipal line because they didn't want to go through our extensive process, but they wanted to go through the Industry Canada process in Guelph-Arimosa. And so what we realized is that the smaller municipality outside was actually kind of getting more applications than they would have, because of the fact that they didn't have the same controls in place. So what we realized is we want to do this on a county-by-county basis, because we don't want an application, you know, being put in one area, and because it's harder to get want an application, you know, being put in one area and because it's harder to get a tower in a different area. So we want to make sure it's consistent across the entire area. So that's part of that. I'm going to talk about what it costs to become a member of CRINS. Absolutely nothing. It's free to the municipalities. And you might say, well, how is that possible? Well, what it is, is very simple. We charge an application fee. That application fee is approved by each municipal unit. And the application fee consists, it's, it's very much like a development fee, for all intensive purposes. It has two components. A component to recover the cost of the planning staff at the local municipality and a cost to recover CRINS costs, because again, we're not-for-profit. Though that, those two numbers are added together, that becomes the application fee, and that fee is paid by the proponent, just like they would for a development permit or a building permit, et cetera. So that is how we fund CRINS, and that is how we do it without accosting the municipality anything. So I, I mentioned that because that's always one of the questions, how much is it going to cost? And it, it doesn't cost anything, we fund it a different way. So how do you become a member of CRINS? Well, like I said, Laurentian Valley and Pembroke can certainly tell you, it's, it's not hard. Basically, we're looking for a motion from each municipal unit to become a member of CRINS and to authorize CRINS and its staff to act on your behalf for these applications. We have a consultation protocol, and again, your planning staff have copies of this. And that is the protocol through which we evaluate all the applications. We set the application fee, which is something that we will discuss with the individual municipalities. And then we simply ask for a copy of a joining letter. And the joining letter is a very standard letter. It has some very specific text in it to tell Industry Canada that we are now representing the municipality. There is no other contract, it's a letter, we serve at the pleasure of council, we can stop serving just as easily. If you decided the next week you didn't want to be a member of CRINS, you just say you're not going to be a member. We've not had anybody leave yet, though. So I think we're in good shape. So that is the end of my presentation, so I thank you very much, and I'm happy to take questions.
Sure. Members of council, Councilor Dixon, please.
Thank you. We're reading through you to Mr. White. One of the things that bothers people who walk in rural areas is not so much the height of the tower or the look of the tower, but the lights that are flashing into a dangerous facing the tower. As CRINS has done the investigation on putting undershielding on the lights to still make them effective for aircraft, but to minimize the blinking into people's bedrooms.
Right. Through you, Mr. Warden. The, we've done enough, almost all of our towers that are in cottage country, we have this safety discussion. There's a couple of different things. There can be shielding that can be used to reduce the intensity of the light within a five-hundred, eight-hundred meter radius. Sometimes they use white strobe lights on the top, sometimes it's better to use red. So that's an option. We've even gone and gotten exemptions from Transport Canada. Quite often, Transport Canada used to be very overly conservative when they put lights on everything. But the fact is, is lights only apply if it's an aeronautical obstruction. So quite often, these towers are well below where a plane should be flying in the first place. And unless it's coming into a lake that's an aerodrome for a specific reason, planes will be above it in any event. So we quite often will say, well, it doesn't really need lighting. And certainly, North Quartha is one of our members, they have a lot of lake country, and that's one of the things we'll do, we'll try to get a dark sky policy approach to it. So we'll try to get lights taken off. And quite often, we'll work with the proponents to do that. Unfortunately, proponents do not have control over the lighting. It's dictated by Transport Canada. So when someone says, well, you're putting lighting on it, it's not Rogers or Bell or Tellus that's deciding that, it's Transport Canada. So that fight has to be done with Transport Canada. And we've been successful in getting alternative approaches now.
Thank you. Councilor Sweet, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Todd, for your presentation, appreciate it. Through you, through the forum to you, I said as a member of the Board of EORN, and one of the initiatives that we're doing going forward, and it's just been endorsed as a, similar to broadband initiative, the gap analysis. We're now moving into doing gap analysis on cell phones, utilizing existing structures that may be there, et cetera. How do you see CRIN that's working or in tandem with the EORN? You talked about sighting, et cetera, et cetera. How, how do you see your organization working with EORN? They're moving forward to do that and identify block areas that you can be with. Can you, give me a bit of an overview of what your sense is of the difference between or the harmonization between the two organizations?
So, I mean, EORN, it sort of has been doing some great work with broadband, and certainly we encounter ExplorerNet and a number of the other proponents that are participating in that. We have probably one of the most comprehensive databases in the country as far as existing structures. We actually have a better database than Industry Canada. And the reason for that is broadband projects are not, don't use license exempt spectrum. And therefore, Industry Canada is not always aware of all the towers that are being put up for broadband. We actually have all of the data from Transport Canada and AF Canada. We push for co-location on most structures that, and that's actually a federal requirement, that's not a CRINS requirement or a municipal requirement. Industry Canada wants proponents to share towers. So we're certainly available, you know, we're certainly able to help them share structures. We don't have a gap analysis, we're not doing a gap analysis. Our, our job or our mandate is not to help fill in the gaps. So I don't think there's any conflict or any, you know, there's, I don't think we can contribute to the EORN function in that respect, and certainly it's not a conflict. We would certainly be there to help them, you know, pick good site for any towers. And so when, you know, when a tower's going to be built, we would look to perhaps score it through the ASDF and make sure, you know, maybe you can move it fifty meters this way or move it a hundred meters somewhere else to help, help that tower fit in the best possible way within the public realm. So I don't think there's, I, I think we're a supporting role, I don't think we're, you know, there's no, no conflicts and there's no, we can't really help EORN beyond that sort of planning, sighting aspect.
Okay, thank you for that. I wasn't suggesting a conflict, I was just trying to find out if there was a, some sort of harmony between the two organizations.
Yeah, we certainly would be happy to provide any of our information to EORN.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dunhill, and then Councilor Stack.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would like to ask of Mr. White, it's certainly his time, he is being here today. We are, County Council is sometime later, they're going to entertain a motion for the direction of a, going to be a cellular tower properly where Berrish Lodge is. And I have a question, will be discussed as that committee, that's really accepting that, that commissioning the, this particular tower is going to be within those guidelines established by Health Canada for safety consideration. And my question is, is there, over time, is there any possibility of deterioration or that this is something that needs to be monitored? Or once erected, particularly in this instance, in a long-term care facility, I think that there would be residents and relatives that would be interested in knowing, is that subject to change, the exposures?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So in that particular application, I have to note that because it's going to be in Pembroke proper, and so we will be analyzing that particular application as CRINS already because Pembroke is a member. So the answer is, the proponents have an obligation to comply with Safety Code Six, they provide an attestation that says that it will. When they commission it, an engineer will look at that site, make sure it does meet it. So now, the question is from that day forward, what happens? We actually have audit staff that wander around all of our various municipalities, we have monitors. So we often will test towers on an ongoing basis. It, if someone was to call us tomorrow and say, we're concerned about this tower, and they're a member, we will go out and test it. So that's the simple answer. On that particular installation, in fact, we worked with Rogers to find that location, and we know that it will be safe. So, and like I said, we would provide ongoing monitoring of that installation as part of our obligations.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Stack.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Information is timely as well. It's more of a comment, I guess, generally with these things, people tend to think rural, you know, our area's an urban community. And within the past two years, unknown to us as a municipality, and there's been no issues with it, a local business built its rooftop, the tower was on Main Street in downtown, and we got a couple calls to want to burn it back. So, you know, it, it hasn't really been a major issue, but now that there's one, as a municipality, we're wondering what's, what's the control factor, I guess, going forward in terms of all the, because we have some fairly high roofs, five stories, you know, that sort of thing in town. So we'd like to be in touch to maybe bring it to town and help us through that process.
Sure. And if I may make a comment, one of the, one of the things with rooftop sites is, rooftop sites are considered exempt installations according to Industry Canada. And we actually had a bit of an argument with Industry Canada about this about two years ago. We, we, according to them, an exempt site means there's no public consultation, and they don't even have to talk to the land use authority, period. It's supposedly completely, and we went back to Industry Canada and said, well, we have a problem with that. And they said, well, that's nice. And we said, you're actually interfering with the tax administration process. And I kind of stopped them for a moment. And we, and our argument to Industry Canada, which has now bared some fruit, is that if you think about any other development, there's a development permit, there's a building permit, so that triggers a reassessment by IMPAC. That was not happening for radio communications towers in Ontario. And in fact, we just finished a task force with IMPAC last year where we identified that IMPAC is aware of less than thirty percent of the radio communications towers in Ontario. And that's through no fault of IMPAC, it's because of this loophole in the federal regulations where they are not required to talk to the local land use authority, which is the trigger that would have caused a reassessment. So we've worked with IMPAC, IMPAC has put together a report and has sent that off to the Minister of Finance. The Minister of Finance is now devaluing that to determine what to do about reassessing all of these towers. There's literally seventy-five-hundred structures in Ontario, less than thirty percent of them are had been assessed for, for property tax. And so that's a, that's a pretty substantial, substantial issue. So that is now being reviewed at the Ministry of Finance. And that was one of our projects.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Thank you very much, that was extremely informative and for me valuable about the fact that IMPAC isn't able to generate some revenue, so thank you. Now, I know councils waiting to breathe a breath to see if they're ever get this next section, but correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. All correspondence have been forwarded to the appropriate committee.
Thank you. We'll move to finance and admin, and Councilor Stack, please.
Thank you, Warden. Just before I start, I'd like to thank Mr. Warden and Staff for getting a seat in the room this morning. It was a little cool when we first came in. We, your finance and administration committee wish to report recommend as follows. Number one is the council remuneration. Two is the Treasury's report, February twenty-eighth fifteen. Three, the education tax rate. Four is the unauthorized two thousand fourteen financial statements for Renfrew County Cozy Corporation, Boncher Manor, Berrish Lodge, the general revenue plan. And number five is the long-term financial plan, and I'm going to skip right to the resolution on page fourteen. And the resolution, we've been, it's been presented at least twice through all of the committees and councils before, so. Resolution number FA-CC-15-04-46, moved by Chair and Second Committee, that County Council approve the long-term financial plan to be used as a guideline for future budget deliberations to strategically finance the County of Renfrew's asset management plan and further that the long-term financial plan and score character review each year as part of the budget process. Number six, hydro rate resolution. I'm going to read resolution number FA-CC, I'm sorry, skipped one here. This one is fairly lengthy, Warden knows, you want me to read this whole?
No, you can read it in short, please. Maybe read the last paragraph.
Resolution number FA-CC-15-04. And I'm going to go to the last, whereas, whereas all municipalities should be encouraged to monitor through specific data categories, smart meter electrical fires and/or smart meter malfunctions that have resulted in explosions and further to better assess their impact and the potential need of SCSA-approved meters employing codes and standards used globally by regulators and industry to facilitate safer and more sustainable products. Now therefore, be a result that the township of Madawaska Valley call on Premier Wind and the province's materials take immediate action to prevent these and any other rate increases from being implemented and that, and that Premier Wind and the province's materials be encouraged to do something to bring these rates down to a reasonable level and to do so as quickly as possible, and that this motion be circulated to all Ontario municipalities for support. And number seven is the FCM Federation of Canadian Municipalities membership, and we've talked with this with committees, and if you remember last fall, we did this, again, putting forward a motion to move myself as a nominee for the Board of Directors at FCM. And now they're, I will be going to their annual conference in June, so again, we're putting a motion forward. Moved by Chair and Second Committee, whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities represents the interest of municipalities of policy and programs that fall within federal jurisdiction, therefore be resolved that the council of corporations, the County of Renfrew endorses Councilor Walter Stack to stand for election on the FCM Board of Directors for the two thousand fifteen sixteen term. And be it further resolved that the County of Renfrew Sumo Cost associated with the Council, Councilor Walter Stack attending FCM Board of Directors meetings. And number eight is bylaws, which is the two thousand fifteen tax policy. Let's skip again to the resolution on page thirty. Okay, moved by, sorry, resolution number FA-CC-15-04-47, moved by Chair and Second Committee, that a bylaw to set the tax ratios for the county purposes and lower tier purposes for the year two thousand fifteen to be adopted at this session of County Council. Number eight is a levy prescription, and that's resolution number that FA-CC-15-04-48, moved by Chair and Second by Committee, that the two thousand fifteen tax rate, tax rate for the County of Renfrew included circulation to apply a municipal budgetary tax increase to the industry and large industrial classes equal to fifty percent the tax rate increases over two thousand fifteen notional, notional tax rate for residential classes. Number eight, C is funding for the mandatory relief of maximum tax protection mechanism within Municipal Act two thousand and one. Resolution is number FA-CC-15-04-49, moved by Chair and Second Committee, that the County of Renfrew and its lower tier municipalities continue with a foregoing revenue approach to fund the capping requirements under the Municipal Act. Number eight, D is tax rate reductions for the small property subclasses for county purposes and lower tier, tier purposes. Resolution number FA-CC-15-04-50, moved by Chair and Second by Committee, that a bylaw to set tax rate reductions for prescribed subclasses for the County of Renfrew and its lower tier municipalities for the year two thousand fifteen to be adopted at this session of County Council. Eight, E, is the optional capping tools two thousand fifteen. Resolution number FA-CC-15-04-51, moved by Chair and Second Committee, that a bylaw to adopt optional tools for the purposes of administering limits for commercial, industrial, multi-residential property classes by, A, increasing annual cap in five percent of last year's cap rates to, to the ten percent of last year's cap tax rates. B, set an upper limit on annual increases at a greater of the amount calculated under A for five percent of the previous year annualized CVA tax. And C, above of a, approve of a two thousand fifty, two thousand fifty dollar threshold for increasing properties, thereby moving properties with a billing adjustment of less than two hundred and fifty dollars to their full CVA tax liability for the year. Number nine is County of Renfrew tax rate bylaw. And the resolution is number FA-CC-15-04-52, moved by Chair and Second by Committee, that a bylaw to establish the two thousand fifteen tax rates for the County of Renfrew purposes to be adopted at this session of County Council. And number ten is a code of conduct, and if you're with me for a minute, Warden, I met with the CAO this morning, and over the past couple weeks, we've received, again, a bit of, a fair bit of input on the code of conduct. So what we're proposing is, and I would so moved that it be tabled today, so that we have a chance to provide that input and those questions out to the full council around the table. the table. So what we're suggesting is that the CAO will send the council Code of Conduct with additional proposed changes to the county councils by May 1st, which is the end of this week. And any further comments should be submitted to the CAO by May 12th on anything new or anything that's listed. May's Finance and Admin Report will be sent out on the 15th, including the Code of Conduct and the additional changes or proposed changes, and F and A meets on the 19th. So this would be the one last final kick of the can. Jim sends out the code as it exists today with this new input that's come in in the last 10 days or so, and we have until the 11th to review that and make any additional comments and provide any input to the CAO by the 12th. And then by the 15th, it would be in the package for the next Finance and Admin Committee for us to review and then again recommend to County Council. And then three, County Council, the issue will be dealt with one at my final last time. So all of which is respectfully submitted. Stack, Chair, and Committee members, Emo Love, Miller Murphy, Robertson Sweet, and Vaneski Moore. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from members of council on item number one? Item two? Item three? Item four? Item five? Item number six? Item seven? Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Kingsbury? Item seven?
Yes, Mr. Warden, Resolution of Rev. A-CC-15-04-58 under item number seven. I wonder if we could have just a brief description of how many meetings we're approving with that resolution? Could we take it up a bit? There's not very much information here as to how many meetings or costs or that involved in it.
Mr. Hutton, or is it Councillor Stack? Councillor Stack?
Yeah, thank you. So it's a good question. Mr. Kingsbury and I talked briefly before the meeting this morning, so I did ask the administration to look and see. In fact, the first point is that whether elected and if I was elected to either the Board of Directors or Committee, Committee meetings take place at the same date and time as the Board of Directors meetings. So what we were able to find out in a bit of a rush just before the meeting is that in September, there is one meeting in Frederick, New Brunswick. In November, there's one in Ottawa, and there's a third one this year in Sherbrooke, Quebec. March.
March of 2016.
March of 2016. So there are two potential meetings this year to look at, and one would be in Ottawa and one would be in Frederick. In terms of costs, I mean, Ottawa would be certainly less mileage and a hotel, but Frederick can probably require a flight and a bit of mileage. When we did contact FCM, they couldn't put numbers to it because of the geographics involved in it. But so there would be two of this calendar year before it would again come up for budget next year.
Okay. Item number eight, A? Eight B? Sorry, just trying to make sure I go to the right pages. Eight C? Eight B? Item number nine? Item 10, with council's permission, we've received a motion taping this through to the Finance and Admin Committee meeting for May 15th... Oh, sorry, May 19th, with the report to be brought back to County Council on May 27th. So I have the motion, Councillor Stack, Second, Councillor Gibson. Discussion? Follows in favor? Opposed, none is carried, thank you. And motion on the report, please. So excluding 10. All who's in favor? Opposed? None is carried, thank you, council. And ask Councillor Donahue as Vice Chair of Operations to make the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Destroyed that. I brought myself some water because I think I'm going to have to do Councillor Stack with respect to speaking to a lot of possible resolutions. We, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is member operations. Item number two, quotations and tenders, there's a summary received in month of March attached as a bonus one. Item number three is a correspondence regarding the concern with the deteriorating quality of asphalt in the East River Task Force. Item number four is the Honorary Year End Financial Report in Operations Department. With that is Resolution number OP-CC-15-04-35, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that surplus municipal funds totaling $679,844 from the 2014 Public Works and Engineering Department budget be transferred into reserves as follows. A, the amount of $200,000 be transferred to the equipment reserve, and B, the remaining surplus funds in the amount of $479,844 be transferred into the capital reserve. Item number five is bylaws. First is the acquisition of property on County Road 56, Loyola Station Road. Resolution on that bylaw is OP-CC-15-04-36, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that a bylaw be passed authorizing the purchase of parts two and three on reference plan 49R-18487 for Carl Cuddy and Donna Cuddy for the sum of $500, and that these parts of land be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer Item number six is a road access agreement on County Road 653, known as the Chanel Road. Resolution number OP-CC-15-04-37, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that the road access agreement between 677-2447, Canada Incorporated, and the County of Rennfunk be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of the road access agreement to be passed. Item number seven is the capital project of the rehabilitation of County Road 1, the River Road, and County Road 54, McLean Drive. You can see the tenders received. Resolution to move forward with this project, moved by Chair, it's OP-CC-15-04-38, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that contract PWC-2015-04, submitted by Carson Construction, a division of West Carlton Sand and Gravel Incorporated, Carpe Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 1, River Road, and County Road 54, McLean Drive, in the amount of $748,000 plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of the contract be passed. Item number eight, PWC-2015-05, is the relocation of County Road 58, Round Lake Road, Wuham Avenue. Again, the tenders are included in the report. Staff has reviewed the tender results for the project and confirmed there are sufficient funds and department of budget to complete the project as tendered. Therefore, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, Resolution number OP-CC-15-04-39, that contract PWC-2015-05, submitted by Greenwood Paving, Pembroke Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 58, Round Lake Road, Wuham Avenue, in the amount of $2,145,647 plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of the contract be passed. Item number nine, PWC-2015-06, the rehabilitation of County Road 70, the Willy Road, 17, tenders were requested. You can see the tenders received. In support of this project, and staff has reviewed the tender results and confirmed there are sufficient funds. The Resolution number OP-CC-15-04-40, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that contract PWC-2015-06, submitted by Greenwood Paving, Pembroke Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 70, Willy Road, in the amount of $255,726.94 plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of the contract be passed. Item number 10, the relocation of County Road 6, the Lock widow road. The tenders again are in front of council, and staff again has reviewed the tender results and confirmed there are sufficient funds in the 2015 department of budget. In support of this, Resolution number OP-CC-50-04-41, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that contract PWC-2015-07, submitted by Smith's Construction, a division of the Miller Group Incorporated, Arnhem Prior, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 6, Lock widow road, in the amount of $766,316 plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of the contract be passed. Item 11 is the relocation of County Road 30, the Lake Dorie Road. Three tenders are in front, either to be closed in the report, and staff has reviewed tender results and confirmed there are sufficient funds in the department of budget. In support of this, Resolution number OP-CC-15-04-42, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that contract PWC-2015-08, submitted by Smith's Construction, a division of the Miller Group Incorporated, Arnhem Prior, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 30, the Dorie Road, in the amount of $207,675 plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of the contract be passed. Item number 12, asphalt scratch coat paving and shoulder graveling. 10 tenders were received. Tenders are in front of council. The shoulder graveling and grader sealing portion of the tender reside in the maintenance budget. Funds for this project are being recommended to come from the approved budget items plus cost savings in the capital projects reported herein. In support of, Resolution number 0P-CC-15-04-43, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that tender PWO-2015-08, submitted by Smith's Construction, a division of the Miller Group Incorporated, Arnhem Prior, Ontario, for asphalt scratch coat paving and shoulder graveling in the amount of $720,482 plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of this contract be passed. Pavement marking. Tenders for pavement marking are in the report. The operations portion of this tender is $258,558.41, and the capital allocation is $31,433.56, which represents approximately $70,000 in savings in the capital program. What this specifically is referring to is that the paving would previously have been part of the capital project tendering. Now it is a portion of the pavement marking, is a separate contract from the rehabilitation, and that is how we account, how he has accounted through extremely good work of the departments, saving approximately $70,000. In support of this, Resolution number OP-CC-15-04-44, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that the tenders submitted by Provincial Road Markings Incorporated Niagara Falls, Ontario, for pavement marking in the amount of $347,237 be approved, and that a bylaw will authorize execution of contract PWO-2015-09-09 be passed. All of which is respectfully submitted. Jennifer Murphy, Councillor Murphy, Chair and Committee Members, Michael Donahue, Peter Emo, Deborah Farr, Mary Gruntz, Robert Kingsbury, and Tom Packard.
Thank you. I was at this meeting, I remember the... Questions, comments, concerns from council members on item number one? Item two? Item three? Item four? Item number five? Item six? Item seven? Item eight? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess my comments are from eight through to 12, I believe. What I was looking, I sort of did some calculations to see how much money we'd actually saved in the capital projects, it's over $876,000. So I think that's great. What does concern me though is that when we make these estimates for these capital projects, they do then become part of our budget and part of the level that we have to receive from our taxpayers, sorry. So I guess I have two questions. Is there a way to just fine-tune that process so that we're a little closer to the actual cost? Because in some cases, we were low by, we were over by more than $200,000, and that's my first question. My second question, is there a way to then to take that $876,000 and change that we did take from the taxpayers and put it into a, possibly into a levy stabilization so that the taxpayers next year will benefit from that?
Okay, so I'll break this down into two responses, and I'll ask Mr. Boland for item one, and then probably Councillor Stack for item two. Now, if Chair Donahue wants to chime in after Boland, wave.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Councillor Robinson. What you see here are just the tender results that are posted. What committee also saw was the total roll-up on the various contracts and the various projects. And yes, we are saving some money when you factor in the engineering component and the inspection component and the other components of the various projects. We're looking at a savings over the project, over the program so far of about $300,000. We have received some tenders in yesterday though as well, that are not quite as favorable as we've seen already, so prices are starting to creep up a little bit. Certainly, we do our best in terms of our estimates when we prepare them for a budget. It's always subject to the vagaries of the marketplace, however, we are starting to see some of that creep in where we thought prices might be this year. The early tenders were at or slightly below, we're starting to see them back to where we thought they might be this year.
Councillor Donahue?
Yeah, I was saying that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. But I think it is, it is certainly the proper approach. The estimates for this construction are certainly professionally prepared, and any cost savings that do improve certain of the county overestimated expenditures, I think it is a much more practical approach than to take position and try and refine. I think particularly with the earlier tenders, and Mr. Boland referred to this in the tenders you just received for some of the follow-on projects, capital projects that are going to be done. The early tenders tend to be more aggressive by the contracting companies, and I think those savings are fantastic, but must always err, I think, on the side of caution with respect to estimates.
Thank you. Councillor Stack, please.
Thank you. I was going to be, I had the same basic question as my Councillor to my left here, but I was going to wait to number 15, and I had to move through them all before I asked. But Steve, I think we had talked last year of looking at... But Steve, I think we had talked last year of looking at recording on a sort of a chart basis, and showed the actual tender for the contract, then the engineering costs, then the inspection costs, and netting it out, so that when we looked at the numbers, we'd see the real savings or loss, if you want to call it over or under number, because when you look at the big number, eight hundred and seventy thousand, and then you take five hundred out of that, it changes the picture as well. So I think I was going to ask, I don't know whether it may, but certainly before we close for the month of July, if we could have that sort of report that would include all of the costs on the projects and look at the real number. And historically, what we've done is sometimes, and I'm not sure what committee will recommend this year, is look at a contract that's in process, and then maybe a chance to extend it because the equipment and then the work is there. Sometimes projects are done over two or three phases, over two or three years, so if the funds allow that, the group has recommended extending a contract, or at the end of the year, it's in fact just gone into the surplus or costs that are over. But I think if we could look at that summary, including engineering and inspection costs and the real number, but I know the last couple of years, we have hit over a million dollars sometimes because we've been that efficient about getting those tenders out early and getting aggressive bids on it, and the issue has always been, you know, I refer to it as taxing in advance, or advanced taxing, and I try, I don't like to do that either, but the reality is we have such a deficit in the infrastructure issue of Guff's tenure plan now, if in fact there's a chance of these savings to do more work, I would like council to consider that as part of the solution process.
Councillor Robinson?
Just my final comment. I do appreciate Mr. Boland's information that you provided today, and I would just further with councillor Stack as well, having that additional information when you're not on the committee would be very beneficial and would probably save this entire conversation.
Okay, thank you. And what we can do, I think, is, as committee, we can take a look at the package that we get, which often has more fulsome description, and maybe tailor the report going forward to get more information into it. Thank you. Councillor Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, the due added optimization requested by councillor Robinson, referred to by councillor Stack, was made available to us in committee. One other thing, I don't think there's any reason why it could not be included in the report to council. However, if memory serves, and perhaps Mr. Boland can correct me if I'm wrong, when we did look at those charts within committee, various components that councillor Stack referred to, i.e. engineering and design and construction, all of the savings were within construction, i.e. the engineering and the design presumably are done in-house, which are essentially unknown commodities, so all of the savings on any of these contracts are directly from the tender for the construction itself.
Mr. Boland, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you to the various councillors who have asked questions. Certainly, one of the things that the department proposes to do, and starting in May, is to provide a variance report for the whole program as we have done in the past. We can certainly, with council's request, if you wish, include the more, the greater level of detail on a project-by-project basis as a part of the council report. That's part of the committee report anyway, so it's fairly simple to do. In terms of the going-forward position, what we would suggest, we're hoping to have all of our tenders in and awarded by the end of June, and with that, we would then look at whatever surplus might be coming out of those contracts, and be prepared to make a recommendation to committee and council going forward in June to expand contracts or otherwise utilize whatever surplus might be coming out of the tenders that we receive prior to the end or beginning of the summer. So certainly, we're thinking forward in that regard.
Thank you. Item number nine, please. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Item ten? Eleven? Twelve? I assume you're swatting a fly, councillor Donahue? Thirteen? Report as a whole? A motion, please? Oh, councillor Gibson, question or?
Motion.
Okay, that councillor Donahue. Discussion, opposed, favor? Opposed, none is carried, thank you, and we'll move to development of property with councillor Sweet, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ward. We need your development of property committee to issue a report, and recommend as follows. Information, I can few of them, the first one is the planning division activity report, which can be found on page one fifty-two. That's for your information. Item number two, the digital strategy, a roadmap to digital leadership, which has been generated by the E O R N. I have this, Warden, I don't know whether you want me to go through the whole report and then come back, because you have a notification in here asking me to do a brief overview. Do you want me to go through the report, then come back when you come to number two?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, you see May the twenty-ninth in Pembroke, active transportation, some active transportation is receiving a lot of traction within the county of Rentford, and if anyone can attend that, you see who's going to be involved with that, should be made to get involved, it's, yeah, I'm sure it'll be a very solid eye-opener to a lot of us, and that we can do to keep this all active and available and healthier. Item number four is the Whitewater kayak championships, the world championships that are coming to Whitewater region. This is a big, big event for us here, it's the Olympics, so to speak, of kayaking within the world, and I don't know how many countries are going to be represented, it's quite a number, in excess of sixty, that are coming in from all over the world, Australia and beyond, and the Middle East, the Far East, et cetera. So this is, this is one of those sort of initiatives, hats off to Mr. Komolsky and his team, and Alistair Baird who sits on that committee to bring this to fruition. Just so the committee will know, this is one of the priorities of thrust that the Economic Development Group, through the development of property, organization is trying to encourage things like trade shows, conferences, sports tourism, seminars, et cetera. There's no reason why we cannot get that type of organization to come into our community. I think you see that through this initiative, also the trade show that happened in Arnpriar with the Ontario Road Superintendents. Bringing people into our community is a very positive thing for a restaurant, for a hotel, for shopping, for everything and so forth, so again, I'll make the appeal, if anyone knows of a small organization, I'm not talking about HMO or any of those large conferences, but there's a lot of organizations out there that have a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred members, and we can easily accommodate here for these sort of shows and trade shows, and we're working to bring that forward. The O V T A annual annual meeting was held yesterday, I believe, I think it was very successful, went forward, and they're doing a lot to enhance movement into our community. I gave them a bit of a challenge, one point eight million were here in two thousand and thirteen, I gave them a little bit of an increase, I said one point five doesn't seem out of the, out of, out of large, deep breath when I, when I made that commitment, but one point five million visitors, it would be huge to hear, but nonetheless. Anyway, item number six again for information, trail activities, on April the thirtieth, this Friday, we're having, this Thursday, pardon me, we're having a meeting with regards to the C N initiative, bringing that forward, and we'll deal with some of the issues that are there. As you can read, and I respect the decision that's made by the township of Colonel Haggerty and Richard, Richard's not to participate in the process, and I understand and appreciate that, and we'll discuss that at the meeting. Just also to let you know, the C P rail initiative, while we don't see a lot of it in front of us right now, is like a little bit of a duffel, like crazy underneath the surface, it is moving forward, and we'll be in a position, a little later on, in fact, May or even early June, to give you an update on that. Item number seven, the G I S activities, I don't know where they get this name from, the Digital Raster Acquisition Project, MacRae Two. We were going to do a presentation for you on that, to give you an understanding of how useful a tool it is for planning and development within your communities. I guess it's fair to say a picture's worth a thousand words, and when you see it, what it actually does, it goes back and historically to, say, two thousand and four, shows what your community looked like from, we'll say, twenty thousand feet, and then it zeros in and takes it down to what it looks like in two thousand and twelve, and it takes into consideration all the changes that have happened as far as development is concerned, where it's going, where the roads are still, and so forth, that have to be developed within your communities over the eight years that has followed since the beginning of this project. So we were going to do a presentation today, but it has been delayed until May of next, the next county council meeting. Item number eight, encroachment, Rentford County Place, as you can see, in two thousand and five, we were fortunate enough to acquire the property, where Rentford County Place is at this point in time, and as a result, there was some encroachment by some of the businesses surrounding that, and there were some, there were some legal issues on these things, it's taken a little bit of a while to get to where we are today, but as you can see, committee has directed staff to proceed with the negotiation of sale of the encroached areas within Rentford Chrysler, beds and auto parts, and that's all based on the advice of the, of legal council. Some encroachments there and so forth, and some caveats we had to deal with, et cetera, but it is moving forward. Item number nine, and in fact, I commend the development charges, well, that doesn't really impact most of us within this chamber, the development charges are not widespread throughout the county, but they do, they are in there, there are some changes to it, but also part of that presentation that was made to myself at the annual board, you'll see on page one fifty-eight, which causes concerns to our planning board, and that is in particular about re-plate, it says, increase use and ensure citizen membership on planning advisory committees. That's the move that they want to go into, which is a bit of a challenge for us, okay? Item number ten, speaks to the provincial policy statement and minimum distance separation, that's better?
I think so.
Geez, I'll be honest with you, I've only been here fifteen years, but anyway. I thought I was speaking quite loudly, but obviously not, okay. Anyway, item number ten speaks to the provincial policy statement with regards to minimum distance, and if you want any additional information, the planning group is certainly willing to deal with that or supply that to you. And again, similarly, on number eleven is the guidelines on prime agricultural areas, that's a, in our area, that's a major issue as far as what can be developed and what can't be. Economic Development Council Ontario appointment, I was prepared, you see, appointed to that, that board head call, again, a very important opportunity for Rentford County to be at the table when you get to the bigger picture at the provincial level, and you're dealing with economic development issues with the Ontario government, and it's very important that we have a seat at the table and to bring this resolution forward, it's resolution number D P C C fifteen oh four fifteen, moved by the chair, seconded by committee, that county council crew, that Mr. Alistair Baird, manager of Economic Development Services, assumed the interim board replacement position on Economic Development Council of Council of Ontario Board of Directors. Under item number thirteen, a two-hundred acre parcel land was purchased and added to the county forest in November, the track has not been officially named. For ease of identification and local purposes, Rentford County Forest Tracks have been named based on location of previous owners. Staff is recommending that this track be called the Spearback, Spearbegged Track to reflect the location of the land parcel on that road. It's moved by, pardon me, resolution number D P C C fifteen oh four sixteen, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council, and the new county forest, the Spearbegged Track, to reflect the location of the Spearbegged Road. Couple of leases under bylaws, Provincial Offences lease at one forty-one Lake Street, I think it's self-explanatory there, the numbers that are in place, there is a resolution I don't need to go through at all, but the numbers are all there as far as what we're paying for that. Resolution number D P C C fifteen oh four seventeen, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council pass a bylaw to enter into at this Pembroke city center location for lease at Provincial Offences Administration Office at one forty-one Lake Street, Pembroke. Also, Social Services lease at the same location, one forty-one Pembroke Street East, will have resolution number D P C C fifteen oh four eighteen, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council pass a bylaw to enter into Pembroke City Center incorporation for Ontario Works Offices at one forty-one Lake Street, Pembroke, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, committee members, Doncaster, Gibson, McKay, Miller, and Packard.
Thank you. We're going to add additional comments for item number two.
Okay, fine. Item number two is the E O R N digital strategy, I'll just give you a brief overview of where we are on this particular situation. I don't know whether I want to go necessarily into the genesis of this particular E O R N, but nonetheless, it started a number of years ago, as a result, I'll give you a brief overview for those who are not necessarily familiar with it, it started as a result of a grant that we received from the Ministry of Agriculture and Food, the then Minister Mayor of Dubrovsky, seventy thousand dollars, to do a gap analysis for broadband. That seventy thousand dollars translating into a quarter of a billion-dollar broadband initiative to try and get everyone within eastern Ontario broadband coverage, either through fiber optic cables or through X cord net satellite, stage, our second generation. That project, for all intents and purposes, has been completed and is up and in place. There is some confusion at times with regards to what E O R N does. E O R N is the builder of the system, we're not an internet service provider, I S P, that's up to the local I S Ps to connect to the, the, the program that we put in place or the project that we put in place, and that has happened. Along with that, some fifty, sixty business plans were connected to high speed, in fact, Whitewater region only got the kayak initiative because they could, they could in fact connect to the, to the high-speed internet as a result of E O R N. So to say that, the project is, has been completed, however, we have as a group and a board still to be in place because part of the arrangements of that is that there are contracts in place, and we have to manage these contracts into the year two thousand and twenty-four, and that is something that we'll do to make sure that the contracts have been signed, they live up to these agreements. So what do you do with that, that group that's already there, that has done a stellar job really of bringing this project online? The E O W C, are the overseers of the E O R N, whether they're wards if you wish, and they have endorsed us to go forward with the digital strategy, and that's what you have on your desk today, this is the book that is on your desk, and I want to just speak a little bit about where we're going with this in the future. As you know, and you've heard me say, and I talked to, talked earlier on, we're doing the gap analysis of cell phone. As we all know, as you drive around Rentford County, not just in the urban, the rural area, but in the urban areas, there are black holes and spots where cell phone coverage cannot be received. We are of the understanding that in the next three or four years, eighty percent of all that data will be transferred through cell phones, and so we have to move to make sure that we're in position before that hits us, and so this is what we're going to be doing to see what we can do to utilize some of the facilities that may be used for cell phone coverage throughout eastern Ontario, and so we're beginning to do that gap analysis as one of the initiatives and as part of this whole digital strategy. So we're really moving from a project-specific organization to a more broader group, and I think if you go to page nine in the report, I'll speak a little bit of some of the initiatives that we're specifically looking for. Talk about cell phones. On the left-hand column, you'll see, develop voluntary shared I T services and procurement programs, promote regional training opportunities, that is one of the initiatives that we're looking at, but one of the small, that is a small, a small paragraph here, coordinate and develop a municipal information management project. What that in essence means is that we all have huge amounts of data, and what do you do with it? And so they're looking very seriously at a data center that we can, we can all collectively utilize, secure data center that we can use for our, all of our information. These are in place in other parts of Canada, and we're certainly looking at seeing what we could do with that. Engage municipal planning, if you move to the next column, municipal planning departments to support broadband infrastructure and new developments, I think that's absolutely key, and that would be part of going forward with any development, that we make sure that broadband is in there for homes and businesses, et cetera. Identify opportunities to improve emergency response communications. Identify Opportunities to Improve Emergency Response Communications, think in conjunction with available spectrum options such as the 700 megahertz band. And I think that's an important initiative for us, in particular around EMS, fire departments and so forth. Ensure Ongoing Upgrades to Existing EORN Infrastructure and Maximize Scalability of the Network. So we're continually monitoring that, see what we can do to make improvements. One of the things that I think locally we should be quite proud about is that there is a pilot project being initiated and in place through the Land Ambulance, Mike Nolan, and as you can see, explore opportunities to support home healthcare paramedics are monitoring that. This is a pilot project through Mike and his team. You know, the community paramedics go out into the community. How can we enhance that with the excess capacity that's in the system at this point in time? So a lot of work is still out there. I'm just to give you an idea that the initial project, as I said, has been completed, but I think it could create an opportunity to go beyond that, and that's what this whole digital strategy is all about. This ties into Jim Hutton's initiative of the Economic Development Strategy, again endorsed by Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Okay, Mr. Warden? Sorry about that drink.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, concerns for members of council on item number one? Item number two, the digital strategy. Item three, active transportation. Item four. Item five, OETA Annual Meeting. There were 68 people attended yesterday, and it was a very, very interesting session in terms of attracting people to visit the various offerings that we have. And it talked about how the community is supposed to individually bring them into one individual spot. And as you know, the OETA has been promoting and cross-promoting partnerships and shared visits with a number of attractions, and this was part of that theme as well. And it talked about, one of the advertising campaigns they cited was from the U1 camp, or it talked about going nowhere, and it was directed to people who were hiking or cross-country skiing or near. And it just talked about, you know, the benefit of being alone, going to an area, and how that could then stimulate their people to travel. And we also talked about Oto's very successful advertising campaign, which was around the eight-year-old girl, and just her experiences and tying it back to that so that you would enjoy winter with the fresh eyes of youngsters. So it was, it was very interesting. And then also, most of the members then took those ideas and offered comment. And so I think you're going to see a fresher, different, crisper product coming out of our community as the members start to implement some of these ideas because they're very excited by it. So it was a session well worth attending, and kudos to our staff at Oto and Northern One Well Reforced for sponsoring it. And it was something that was well worth attending. Number six, trails activities. Seven, GIS activity. Eight, encroachment. Item nine, again, this is a fairly significant issue, and I hope you would take this information and share it with your councils. And in any discussions that you have the opportunity to partake, please let your opinion be known. This, I think, is a very significant issue for us, and if we're not careful, we'll have greater control exerted by others who may not earn that interest in part. And so I would suggest you keep an eye on that, but we will. Item number 10. Item 11. Item 12. Item 13. Oh, I'm sorry, Council Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's on item number 12, just to comment. I certainly want to congratulate Mr. Baird on the comment that invited me to be a very astute invitation, and I know that Mr. Baird is not in the room any longer, but I am curious where the invitation to assume that position came from.
I would assume, being part of some of the conversations, his reputation preceded him, also Mr. Kelly, who worked here and has now left us, was sitting on that board and in fact was the president. And prior to that, had assumed some responsibilities for planning the annual conference. And Mr. Baird is no stranger to them, and I think by extension, they felt he could bring his years of experience to the board. And just the variety of activities here, when you look at what happened at the Royal Superintendents Conference, now you look at kayak, you look at X-4150, you look at our leadership on Eastern Ontario Regional Labor and the Wardens Caucus and the cell gap analysis, all of those things Alistair's been a part of, and it makes sense for him to continue that. Thank you. Pardon me, I'm Gogo, yes, definitely that expertise. Yeah, I'm going to forget that. Item number 14, please. Item 15, report as a whole. So moved. Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Posed, none is carried, thank you.
And the Health Committee with Councillor Vazquez, you go, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information, item number one, is the resident population. Number two is the Merrimishy Lodge Foundation, and I want to, on behalf of us all, thank the foundation. They do a wonderful job of supporting the lodge, and they presented Shelley with a check for $35,000, and most of that money led both towards the bed replacement. Number three is the inaugural Brad Smith Award. Again, I want to offer congratulations to Steve on being the first recipient of that award. Four is First Aid Training. Number five is the continuing medical education. Bylaws, Resolution Number HCC 1504-32, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approved a bylaw authorizing the warden and the chief admin officer to sign the completed Schedule D Form of Compliance Declaration for Bochum Air and Merrimishy Lodge. Number seven is the cellular tower that we talked about previously today. Resolution Number HCC 1504-33, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council adopted a bylaw authorizing the warden and the chief administrative officer to enter into a lease agreement with Rogers Communications for the installation of a cellular telephone tower on Merrimishy Lodge Park. Number eight is the powered stretchers. Resolution Number HCC 1504-35, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council adopted a bylaw authorizing the warden and the CIO to sign the contract at this session of County Council for rolling emergency products to provide 11 powered ambulance stretchers to the County of Raffoo Paramedic Service in the amount of $184,565.24, inclusive of HSD service agreement and trade-in allowance. All of which is respectfully submitted as myself as Chair, committee members Doncaster, Donahue, Eamon, Kingsbury, Love and Ray Waller.
Thank you. Comments, questions, and concerns from members of council on item number one? Item two? I think Merrick Vazquez, you were spoke very eloquently about our appreciation of the foundation and our old machines and that's all for us. Thank you. Item number three, and again, congratulations to Steve. Item number four? Item five? Item six? Item seven? Should note that Mr. White, although I got his autograph, is not the Todd White, who was the long-term center in the NHL. Item eight? Council Gibson?
I'll thank you, Warden, through you to the paramedic services. Part of the rationale for buying these powered stretchers was the incidence of back injuries. Are we going to separate the recording of those to see if, in fact, we are getting paid back with the new stretchers?
Gee, Nolan? Thank you, Mr. Warden, to Merrick Gibson. We do that currently in terms of our tracking, not only of back injuries, repetitive strain, shoulder, elbow and so on. So we do anticipate reduction in those injuries, and we'll continue to track that and any of the costs associated with that differential. This has been a very welcome addition by the paramedics in terms of these costs, and one of the reasons that these costs are standing alone, if you will, and that on an annual basis, when we purchase a vehicle that comes with a stretcher, so those costs are built into the current vehicle allocation. So we'll track both of those costs, and we'll be happy to bring that information back to you over time. Of course, it will take a matter of a year or years to be able to track it, but our goal on the whole is to reduce short-term disability and WSIB claims. So I will track that and be sure to bring that back to members of council to show not only offset here, but the reduction in repetitive strain injury, and I would suggest a healthier workforce as well as with all.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns? The report, please.
So, Mr. Warden?
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing now, all those in favor? Posed, none is carried, thank you. And we'll move to Councillor Robinson and the Social Services Committee, the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I wasn't not in attendance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
And Councillor Ryan Waller, please.
Councillor Ryan Waller, please.
Thank you. With your Social Services Committee, wish to report, recommend as follows. Number one, Ontario Works Case Files Statistic. If you love the, still have problems with your sound, so the value of information, or the information is not what is expected. However, the total case load has gone up by 14.89%, compared to last year, and the total number of members gone up 13.79%. Item two, childcare statistics, the current county central ice cream list, total is 287. Item number three, the 2014, 2015 Rentford County Social Housing Revenue Weightlist Statistic And number four, under resolutions, investment affordable housing for Ontario, 2014 expansion. And rental housing component, new build history, the Department of the, they can provide a bit of update on that.
Mr. Anderson, please.
Through you, Warden, to the members of County Council. The report is fairly lengthy, and it does cover a number of years. As referenced by the Vice Chair, the rental housing component, the new build history, I've laid out resolutions that were previously passed by County Council. The Resolution Number SSC 090959 was passed September 30th, 2009. And at that particular time, council had directed us to do a proposal call, and from the proposal call, three proponents had submitted. Council then rated them and laid out a priority in how we were to deal with it as a department. So simply stated, Eganville and Area Long-Term Care Corporation, that particular housing project was built in two phases, 2005 and 2009, and 36 units in total. ARS Realty Investments is in Arnhem Park, and 19 units were built and opened April 30th, 2014. Priority number three is Peddawawa Seniors Housing. That particular group was notified when this resolution was passed. They are in the process, members of County Council, they have retained seed funding from the Federal Government of Canada. You recall in February of this year, we had Vivian Chee in, she spoke to that program. They are in the process of doing a needs-demand study as well as a finance study, because at the end of the day, needs-demand will drive the program, and finance will determine whether or not the program goes forward or not. I can indicate to you that I'm to meet with this group May 13th of this calendar year, and at that time, I'll be able to bring back additional information to you on whether or not the program is going to go forward.
Thank you. And Councillor Ryan Waller, I believe you have a resolution?
Resolution Number SS-CC-15-04-29, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the program delivery and fiscal plan, PTLP for investment in affordable housing for Ontario, 2014 expansion, years two through six, $4,754,000 be approved and submitted to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Health, all of which was respectfully submitted by Chair, myself, Jeff Ryan Waller, and committee members Eamon, Frye, Gibson, Grant, and Stock.
Thank you, Councillor. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council on item number one? I'm sure you are as tired of hearing about the inability of Sam to do a job as we are telling you about it. Item number two? Item number three? Item number four? Councillor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to direct these questions, a few questions actually with respect to the Affordable Housing Ontario Extension Initiative. I think I would direct three to Mr. Anderson. The first is, I note that in the passing of the 2014 resolution that required a allocation of the muddies, I note that there must be a distinction made between expenditure allocation, given that the $277,000 was allocated and be spread over five years, which would necessarily require a deposit in reserves and withdrawn over a five-year period reserves. And so the first question then is, is ultimately, the year one funding turns out to 10%, essentially 10% of the total amount over six years. I'm curious if that was a surprise, that it was that significant, that it was determined to essentially spread the initial year payment over a five-year period?
Sure. So contained within the reports, the initial allocation was a need a surprise, financially speaking. The year one allocation was given to us and contained within the report is a note that says, that indicated that in December, we received a total allocation of 5.2 million, which is really double what we previously received from the province of Ontario. So the dollar amounts certainly did double. And the process that the province uses, as indicated to you in your question, is that we have to book the money. We have to tell them that indeed, you gave it to us, we'll use it. It's a notional allocation. You don't use it, you return it to the province of Ontario.
Thank you. Supplementary. Second question refers to the, it's akin to what was already done in year one, actually on page 196 of the report though, where it refers to the expenditures on the follow-on years. Under rental, I see rental allowance here again, I noted in the chart, I think it's on the next page, there is a distinction between dedicated and, sorry, direct and shared delivery housing allowances. I'm wondering if Mr. Anderson could comment on what is the distinction between those two?
Through you, Warden, to the members of County Council. Direct delivery is when the service manager, which is the County of Rentford, pays the household directly. Shared delivery is when we use the Ministry of Finance to pay the household directly. We have previously done direct delivery. We have tested shared delivery. We have previously done direct delivery. We have tested shared delivery. I believe we're going to go back to direct delivery, where the county of Ranford is more control on how we allocate the money. We find that the Ministry of Finance, if there is one document missing or one signature not supplied, then the proponent does not get the money. We have the flexibility here, a little closer to our client, to chase the client down and get the necessary paperwork completed.
Thank you. Counselor Dunn, supplementary?
Final question, thank you, Mr. Chair, again, directed to Mr. Anderson. Just above that, on page 196, it does give two lines, one being rental housing, and the second being Ontario renovates, and they are pretty substantial amounts. Just wondering at what point council may expect to see these, perhaps flesh out a little bit more onto how they are supposed to be allocated?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to the members of county council. The county of Ranford by law signed an administration agreement with the province of Ontario. That administration agreement released the notional allocations to the county of Ranford. As we move forward on the rental housing component, it will be necessary by bylaw that we sign a contribution agreement with the proponent. And in the contribution agreement, we lay out the financial components of the program and your obligations. So, as a upper-tier government, this particular complex, when and if built, will be taxed at a residential rate, although it's a multi-residential unit. There is an agreement called Facility Bylaw that must be entered into, both by the county of Ranford and the lower-tier government, where this particular development will be built. It's all laid out in black and white, and we'll come back to you. And I can tell you in detail, and we'll walk you through the agreement and show you what your obligations are. Simply stated, it's a 20-year marriage. And if something happens during the marriage, property actually fall off the fall, you inherit it. You run it down.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, questions, concerns from members of council? All right. Report, please. No motion. Can you move it? Great. Thank you. Discussion? All's in favor? Opposed, none. Miss Carey. Thank you. Move the bylaws, please?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a little stall here. Moved by Janice Wazeski Moore, seconded by Tom Peckett, that the bylaws listed on item 11 and attached here to Schedule A on the county council agenda dated April 29, 2015, be deemed read, pre-timed, and passed.
You create the motion. Discussion? Counselor Sweet, did I miss something?
Just for my understanding here, final authority to 15 adoption of Council Code of Conduct, I believe that was tabled. That's not part of this motion?
Okay, and I would request a motion to amend that. Counselor Dunn, you second?
Just a friendly amendment, just to refer to.
Certainly. Counselor Sweet?
That would be fine with me.
Discussion? So, we're all agreed that we'll remove that from this motion? Perfect. Thank you. And with that, can we vote on the amended motion, please? All's in favor? Opposed, none. Miss Carey. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Sweet, for giving me the honor. With that, we'll break for lunch, and we'll be back at 12:45. Back to everyone. Please be seated. Okay, item number 12, notice of motions. Counselor Gibson has submitted a notice of motion dated March 10, 2015, regarding the ordained prayer. Under procedural bylaw, we can't have any discussion unless there's a second year. So, with that, is there a second year for Counselor Gibson's motion? Okay, seen none. We'll move to item number 13. Members' written motions. Okay, seen none. And the next item is new business. So, with that, Counsel, I'm sorry. Oh, Counselor McKay.
Is this quick where I can just ask the question? But not be normally talked about here. It's an idea.
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sorry.
It's a procedural question, and it's from my understanding. I don't, as a councillor of this council, understand why there seems to be a restriction on my seeing reports of other committees. As it is, I see the reports when I log on, of both property and social services. But if I felt I wanted to see the reports of them to other ones after they, committees have received them, not prior to, but after they've received them, I don't quite understand why that's not available to me.
Mr. Anderson?
Certainly, they are available. If you're having difficulty there, please have a discussion before or after. We will make sure you, those are available to you.
So, when I log on, I'll be able to see them? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Actually, it's not exactly that way, because I have figured out how to do it. When you're talking about logging on, it's when I log on, what I have available to me are all the committees that I sit on. However, on the county's website, the public website, there, I can access the report. Now, the unfortunate thing is, is it is not enabled for me to electronically make any comments, to mark it up, as those that are on my login site. But it still is available there to be read through the public portal into the county's website.
And that's fair all. Are you? Sorry, I just would like to see them when I log on, so I can annotate. So, when I come to the county, I have the ability to pick it over before I get it, where I'm not trying to process everything in dynamic mode.
Sure. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I want to, if you can, Counselor McKay, talk to Rose and I after, because those are public documents that are available, so it's not really an issue. It's just a matter of...
It's okay.
Yeah, so, we can deal with that and hopefully come up with something that works for you.
Counselor Stowe?
I just said, why don't we send them out to committee members? Why don't we just send them to council?
That's what I say.
You know, and they're there for everybody to review what they wish to.
Okay, what I would suggest, then, is, first of all, we'll have Counselor McKay meet with the staff to see if there's some mechanical issue. Secondly, if you wouldn't mind putting that on the agenda for finance in a minute, then we just work our way through that, and if we need to change how we do things, we can do it at that level.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. With, under new business, I'd like to suggest you, in light of the Supreme Court ruling that we've all heard about in the media, that under, under Section 51 Sub B, item number four, we can suspend the rules of procedure to have a discussion about that in order to instruct staff if we want to respond to the Supreme Court ruling. And I would suggest, I would hope that the discussion would center around one option, which we do nothing. Two, which is to suspend the practice of the prayer by remending our procedural bylaw permanently. Three is to suspend it temporarily while we get a legal opinion. And four is to continue to get a legal, continue with the present practice and to get a legal opinion about a new procedure, a new practice, or possible suspension. I think with the announcement, I know I've been contacted by a number of municipal staff from lower-tier municipalities, hoping that the county would take the lead and help them make some decisions about this. So, with that, if I could have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure prior to discussing this. So, Mayor Wazneski Moore would make that motion, and Counselor Dunn, I'm assuming you're seconding?
Of course.
All right. Discussion on suspending the rules? All's in favor? Opposed? None. Miss Carey. Thank you. And I thank you, counsel. I appreciate the following the process. It's very unusual for me, so I'm assuming that's on trial to ground for you to see me do that. So, Counsel, where?
I am prepared to make a motion that we do nothing. And I'd ask if somebody would consider seconding that. That was one of your options?
Yes, it was. All right, sorry. Counselor Reimold seconds the motion. Discussion? Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Dunn.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to make counsel aware that I am being discriminated against, and I will not stop until that discrimination ends. And if council puts itself in a position where they're paying a lot of money for legal fees and a lost cause, then you can take that up with your ratepayers. Thank you.
And Counsel, I'm sorry, who did I see after that?
Donnington.
Donnington, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My position on this is, I don't, there certainly is enough latitude. I am not trained in the law whatsoever. I have certainly read from front to back the decision of the Supreme Court of Canada. And I think there certainly is enough latitude that was left within that decision, that it is not so cut and dried as Counselor Gibson would suggest. However, so, I'm certainly not of the opinion, at this point, that I am putting in jeopardy, unduly, any financial resources of the county. Having said that, I am, would speak against the motion put forward by Counselor Wazeski Moore. I do not think that it would be proper for us to ignore completely and carry on without any reference to the legal minds that we may have available to us to give us some guidance on what we are doing. I am not suggesting that we change, that we stop, or that we continue, just that. I don't think we, my position is that we cannot ignore.
Thank you. Counselor Wazeski Moore, McKay, and Stowe?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll remind this chamber that county council previously spent money to get a legal opinion. We have a legal opinion that was offered to us and paid for by the taxpayers of Ranford County. So, I don't see why we need to get another legal opinion. We already have that opinion. It gives us the right to say the prayer that they, the words that we say begin each meeting. So, that's why I put my motion forward. Why would we get another opinion when we already have one sitting? You all have a right to see that. And I'm hoping that county council will support my motion based on the fact that we've already paid for an opinion, and it says that we can say what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKay.
I'm not in support of the motion. I have worked all over the world, and in no case have I learned to where a prayer is said at the beginning of any meeting that I attended and handed to companies that I contracted to, mainly because I wasn't, it wasn't just a Canadian company. They were from all over the world, including South Africa, including Kenya, wherever. So, most of us that sat around the table had completely different backgrounds. One was not better than the other. We were all equal. Canada is a multicultural country, and our death rate's exceeding our birth rate. Therefore, we are dependent on immigration to come to this country. And I truly believe that we set examples for multicultural communities. So, I think that the county council should at least discuss it. I'm not saying spend billions of dollars to get legal reports, but I think everybody around this table should have an opportunity to at least discuss it.
Thank you. Counselor Stowe?
Thank you, Warden. I'm not going to support Janice's motion either, because, for a number of reasons. One is that, yes, there is a provincial legal opinion, and we do have now a federal Supreme Court opinion. And there's a, I certainly think that we should get a legal review of that. I don't know how the rest of you is feared of, but I know, Warden, you and I got a significant number of calls and emails and conversations about this issue. And I have to say, quite frankly, 100% of the ones that I got were in support of retaining the prayer. And from my perspective, it's not so much just a, based on a religious scenario as much as, it's a, you know, Canada is a multicultural nation, but it's also still a democracy. And then a democracy, majority rule, and I'm still kind of hung up on that old-fashioned philosophy, I guess. And so, you know, I think the decision, what we do in the long run should be the majority. This table decide that. But in fact, I'm no legal mind at all, and I haven't read it from cover to cover. But I certainly reviewed the decision, and I discussed it with Jim in it, and there are at least two or three references to the Pembroke decision, which, in my limited ability to interpret, does not make it just clearly cut and dried that the Supreme Court of Canada decision necessarily applies here. The response from the community is such that I think they, or at least his ratepayers, this council to seek legal opinion and understand exactly what kind of a legal position we're in, regardless of what decision we make here. So, doing nothing, I don't think is the answer. Retaining the prayer and going forward, but certainly seeking a legal opinion as to how this federal court decision impacts us, I think, is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll make a couple of comments, and then we'll call a vote, or there might be a friendly amendment made. With that, I would suggest to you as well that it would make sense for us to get a legal opinion, because although we have a judgment from 2004, which, in essence, ratified the councils of the day's decision to use the present prayer. That was 2004. That's 11 years ago. And as such, there may be some changes in legislation that behooves us to change how we do things. I would suggest to you that, as we represent our larger community, that too should enter into our considerations. I would, you know, hope that council would take all of this information and then request a legal opinion on our present practice. And having said that, then, as Counselor McKay suggested, that we then take a period of time to review it and have a good, fulsome discussion, counsel. And so, Counselor Wazeski Moore?
So, Mr. Warden, in your kind words, are you asking me to reconsider to, just along?
I would not attempt to, I would not attempt to influence you. I would assume you come to your own logical address.
Oh, you're good. Be a nice. Okay, so, just so I understand what it is that I'm going to be moving. So, can we continue to say the prayer until such time as we get a legal opinion?
If you...
Can my motion say that we continue the practice and seek legal opinion? That was one of your options. Could I change my motion to that? Jim is getting fidgety, so...
Sorry, Mr. Anderson?
The motion that I wrote down, moved by Wazeski Moore, seconded by Reimold, was that we continue to say the prayer as per our procedural bylaw. That's status quo. We would, to amend that motion, we would have to deal with the amendment first, and then go back to the main, that would be the main motion. So, whatever wording you want, if amendments be considered, we would need that wording. Vote on that first.
Okay, so, could I leave the motion exactly like you read it, and then put, but, after what you said? But that county council would proceed to get legal opinions, blah, blah, blah?
If I may, you could say, Mr. Warden, Counselor, pending receipt of a legal opinion on the Supreme Court of Canada.
Okay, so, John, would you be willing to second it, that we made that change? So, could I make that change, Mr. Warden?
Yes. Amendment would then read?
That we continue to say the prayer as per our procedural bylaw. The amendment we'll have to vote on is pending receipt of a legal opinion regarding the recent Supreme Court decision.
Sorry, Mr. Warden.
Yes.
So, you're saying we can't follow it, because it's pending a legal opinion? So, you're not doing what I'm asking?
No, it's to continue to say the prayer.
Okay.
Pending a legal opinion. Then, once we get the legal opinion, we would have to look at it again.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, I'm good.
That's what you request.
That's what I want.
Okay, thank you. And with that discussion on the amendment, Counselor Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm sort of going to defer to those in front of the room regarding procedure. But this seems to be a fairly fundamental alteration of the original motion that was on the table. In my own mind, was I'm wondering if we shouldn't have disposed of that motion, called that question, and then opened the floor for anything further, if that's available to us. Because of my own... my own... My own position is, I'm not advocating prayer, no prayer. What my position would be, in first dealing with the question before us, would then be put in front of us, let me continue as per our procedural bylaw for our agenda while we seek a legal review of this. Because that is essentially my position, is we have a procedural bylaw. I'm saying is why don't we stick to it while we're getting this?
Same thing. Thank you.
Mr. Hutton, please.
I don't believe there's a procedural issue. I think we can deal with it as amended. It does say that we continue to say the prayer as per our procedural bylaw. That's if we get back to that motion, if the amendment is approved. And I believe we can deal with it as amended.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson? I'm sorry, I was just reading procedural bylaw.
Thank you, Warden. I'd just like to point out that in every day in this country, people pay for legal opinions on one side of the issue, on the other side of the issue. At the end of the day, a judge, someone, will make a decision as to which legal opinion is correct or not. I really think it's foolish for Rentford County to seek legal opinion when everybody else in the country is doing the same thing and spending taxpayers' money for legal opinions that, at the end of the day, may or may not be valid. So I would have a suggestion after we deal with this matter that may solve that problem for us. Thank you.
Counselor Dunn, give me one second, please. Under section 62 of the procedural bylaw, item sub A, it says, "The purpose of a motion to amend is to add or insert certain words or phrases, to strike out certain words or phrases, or to strike out certain words or phrases, and insert da, da, da." Sub 3 says, "May propose a separate and distinct disposition of a motion, provided that such altered disposition continues to relate to the main issue and the subject matter of the motion." Does that meet your question?
You're talking to me.
In short, the preamble says you can insert, and more specifically, subsection 3 says, "May propose a separate and distinctive disposition of a motion, provided that such altered disposition continues to relate to the main issue and subject matter of the motion."
That's what we can do, yes.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Counselor Dunn, you?
Actually, Mr. Chair, this is quite a privilege, is perhaps alternate wording could be used, but it seems to me that I'm being considered to be foolish in taking the position that I am. Perhaps I'm taking that in the wrong way, but that seems to have been the position of Counselor Gibson, that all those in this room would be foolish to commit to this.
Okay, I'm not... I'm unsure that that was the strength or tenor of his comment, however, if he wishes to clarify, we appreciate it. Counselor Gibson, please?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Thank you, Warden. Counselor Dunn, that was the last thing I would want to do. Perhaps I would use the word onwise, financial decision rather than foolish, if that falls well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson, for the clarity. So no further discussion? Could you read the motion again, please, to make sure we're all clear?
Thank you. I'll have to read the amendment first.
Sorry.
I'll start with the original motion, then the amendment. We'll have to deal with the amendment first. That we continue to say the prayer as per our procedural bylaw was the original motion. The amendment, which we will have to deal with first, would add pending receipt of a legal opinion regarding the recent Supreme Court decision.
Thank you. And so with that, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on the amendment, please. All those in favor? Opposed? One? Motion, Ms. Carey?
Motion, Ms. Carey.
So thank you. We can move forward with the agenda then? Is there any other new business?
The original motion has amended.
All right. So with that, so the same mover and seconder still are in effect with the motion. So now we're going to deal with the amended motion?
The main motion has amended.
The main motion has amended. Thank you very much. And Counselor Dunn, sorry?
Yeah, I'm just wondering for... I was getting, as part of this motion now, if council is also giving direction for that opinion to be attained, or...
I would suggest to you that, yes, that is, and unless the confirmatory bylaw then offers their support for that. Is that fair to say that?
We could do this as a separate motion. Our... We could go through the amendment process, which might get messy. We could do a separate motion and just direct staff to seek legal advice.
I still vote.
We'll deal with that. Deal with this first, one person.
Thank you. So with that, folks, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One, it's Carey. Thank you, counsel. And with that, under new business, I see Counselor Veske Moore again.
Do you need that motion then, Jim? I still move the motion, what you said. The registered one.
So the motion would read that county council will seek the two staff a legal opinion on the ramifications of their recent Supreme Court decision? Correct. Thank you.
I still move.
And a secondary, is that Counselor McKay?
I just wanted to... Before this... At town, not council.
Okay.
And she...
Well, I say, it's my motion, so, but...
Okay.
I can suggest it.
Just give me one second here. We'll... Can you just read the suggested motion again, please? It may need your... You needs, if not, we'll fix it.
Just have a little effort coffee, keeping up with my note taking, sorry.
There's no discussion yet.
Yeah, yeah. So I need to get Jim to see a little read the motion. We'll find a second, and then we'll move to discussion. You guys are working my deodorant over something here today. I'm telling you, it's not breaking down yet. For five more minutes, you're in trouble.
Nobody said that job is easy.
I was pretty sure of that. Terry Gunn wants it, though. He told me in the hallway today.
I didn't, no.
That's not quite what you said, wasn't it, Terry?
The motion and the mover can indicate whether it reflects what she wishes, that staff be directed to seek legal advice with regard to the recent Supreme Court of Canada decision and county's procedural bylaw related to prayer.
Can I have a secondary for that, please? Counselor Dunn? Discussion? Counselor McKay?
All I was looking to was ensure that it would come back to county council for open discussion. So if that's understood in the motion, I'm drunk on what the other was, I just want to add the lines for discussion in county council.
We believe it's understood, Counselor McKay, given that we're issuing this instruction from county council, although not from a committee.
That was all clarification, I was going to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? One? Sorry, it's Carey. Thank you, counsel. Any further new business? Looks like I ran out of my deadline on my deodorant. Number 15, closed meeting. We do not have a closed meeting. Confirmatory bylaw, Counselor Visnaski Moore, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by John Reinhold, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Rentford, the meeting held on April 29, 2015, be now numbered, deemed read, pre-timed, and passed. Bylaw number 47-15.
You've heard the motion, counsel? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? Ms. Carey, thank you very much. Counsel, thank you very much for your patience. As we've lended our way through the procedural bylaw and any number of other issues, you've conducted yourself with a proper decorum and respect, and I and your public are very appreciative of that. Thank you. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Kingberry. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? Ms. Carey, thank you, counsel.